Cloud. So, welcome everyone. This is a meeting of CRC. It is being recorded to the cloud and our IT department will upload it to the Town of Amherst YouTube channel later this week or next week. And due to suspension of certain open meeting laws, this group is able to meet via Zoom. I will now turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Rooney, if you want to do a sound and video check of all of your participants, that would be great. And if you'd like, I can make Dave Zemeck host.
We usually, we usually kind of share and co-host here.
You are now the host.
So Dave can do whatever he wants. Okay, folks, it is February 27th. This is a regular meeting of the Community Resources Committee. Angela just read off the pursuance to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2020 and 21 and extended by chapter two of the Acts of 23. We are conducting this meeting via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may also do so via Zoom or by telephone. There is no in-person attendance of members of the public, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. We have a quorum and I'll call to see if people can hear us. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
And Counselor Hanke.
Present.
And Pam Rooney's present. There are no public hearings today. And let's see what we have for public attendance. We have an opportunity for general public comment. And it is for a period of up to three minutes. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, you are more than welcome to raise your hand and we'll bring you in. I don't see any hands. I did, I did say in the public, general public comment meeting that there would also be an opportunity for public comment following the CRC discussion of the solar bylaw, which is action item four A. So that would be a different, another opportunity. I was going to have Nate give us a quick update of the ADU and sort of where we stand relative to our reactions to it and/or our tailoring of our own bylaw to the new changes, but he's not available. So we will.
Chris has to hand up, Pam.
Pardon?
Pam, Chris just raised her hand.
Sorry, I had my paper up. Yeah, Chris. Hi, Chris.
I just wanted to note that the material related to ADU appeared towards the end of the agenda. So Nate may have seen that, so he may come in later. I just wanted to suggest that we should keep an eye out for him. That's all.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll do that. I think when I wrote a note to the staff that I said I would try to put it first, so we would just get, get that focused on, but there's Nate. Nate, can you hear us?
I can. Sorry, I I felt like I was interrupting something, so I turned my camera off as well.
No, we were, we were actually at action item four. And just said that since we expected that it would only be a 10 or 15 minute conversation with you, we should have you start. Are you prepared to do that?
I am. Yeah, that sounds good.
Great.
Sure. Yeah. Thanks, everyone. Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. You know, I've been working a little bit with the planning board on regulations for the new protected use ADUs. And so, you know, we had started a draft bylaw a while ago, and then with the state regulations changing, we hit pause a little bit just to see how everything would end up. And so the current thinking right now is to keep our existing bylaw. So we have an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. It has, it defines ADUs three ways, you know, being contained within a unit, attached or detached. And then it has a bunch of standards and conditions. And you can get up to 1,000 square feet, which is bigger than the 900 allowed by the state. One unit has to be owner occupied and then it does require a special permit for some. So, you know, that bylaw is in place. And it could still be used. It can, you know, voluntarily be used and you can follow those, you know, those provisions. And then the standard set of general conditions in this bylaw, some apply to the protected use ADUs. So, you know, you can apply what's consistent with the state legislation and the rules and regulations. So some of those can be applied by staff, the building commissioner or building inspectors. However, the current thinking is we'd like to add a protected use ADU set of standards and conditions to the bylaw and possibly a definition that follows the state definition. So the planning board, there's a document that the planning board will discuss next week. The housing subcommittee talked about it briefly at its meeting this week. Looking at what kind of standards and conditions we could apply to standard use AD or protected use ADUs. And so they're somewhat different than what's in the bylaw. You know, you can't, you can't have certain restrictions or limitations, but you know, we are trying to say things like a student home definition, so that one of the units could not be a student home. You know, there's some discussion about that, regulating parking, having a maximum number of parking spaces, some design criteria. And, you know, there's about a half dozen standards and conditions. And the idea would be for the planning board to discuss that next week. And then the idea is to send it to the state. So the states asked, or they've, they said that they would review, you know, draft bylaws or or legislation, local legislation before communities move forward with it. So, you know, I think some of the things staff questions whether they are reasonable or unreasonable in terms of the regulations, but some of the planning board members feel like they could all be justified. And so, you know, we'll send it to the state, you know, the state may disagree. And then it would become something where the board and the CRC can look at it as a zoning amendment and would go through a local process and, you know, reviewed by KP Law. So we do have a, you know, an ADU bylaw on the books. And we can use it, but the idea is to have a few other conditions for these protected use ADUs. You know, I will say that the state updated their rules and regs. You know, just a few weeks, a week ago or two weeks ago. And to me, it's, they really want ADUs to be constructed and built. And so they really want, don't want them to be overly regulated. You know, I think in Amherst, there's a number of communities where, you know, there's exceptions where it's like, oh, without owner occupancy, what is the impact of building these? You know, and so that's kind of the concern, you know, what, what really happens? Does it change neighborhoods or does it just become investor owned properties that doesn't really meet the goal of what the state wanted? And that's a discussion that's, you know, Amherst is having, and I'm sure other communities is having, are having. You know, the Cape Cod and a few communities, they're not exempt from the legislation. So I think at the planning board meeting, or if not the most recent one, the one before that, there was a discussion about, oh, well, some communities are exempt from this legislation. And the only community that's exempt is Boston. So they're exempt from 40A anyways. What happens, you know, Cape Cod essentially, they, you know, they're in the legislation, there's an ability to regulate short-term rentals. And so, you know, Cape Cod, assuming most of the ADUs will be short-term rentals, can manage it through that, you know, that provision in the, in the law. Not that they're exempt from the legislation. It's just that they can control short-term rentals and they think most of the ADUs will be that. So then, you know, they can manage it through that, but it's not, they're not exempt. They still have to, you know, comply with it. So that's, that's kind of where we are. You know, I, we haven't, I will say, we haven't had any applications yet for protected use ADUs. We've had a lot of inquiries. We've had, you know, a number of property owners ask questions. And, but nothing's actually come in yet. So.
Questions. Oh, go ahead, Jennifer. I was going to ask, when, when do you think you would package something up and send it to the state?
Probably in the next two weeks. There is a webinar that, you know, I think the state's holding in mid-March or March 11th or something to look at a model bylaw for, you know, the protected use ADUs. We may wait, we might wait until then, you know, the Chair of the Planning Board isn't, won't be in attendance next week. And I think another planning board member might be absent, so we might wait again until their March 19th meeting and then send it in afterward. But you know, the idea would be to try to, you know, have some document by the end of March that would be ready to go to the state.
Seems that this group might have some thoughts or ideas on how to package it or what to include with, since we're the ones that would have to bring it to the council essentially to have it voted on. Jennifer.
Yeah. So that's actually one of my questions. What is the process? Would it go from the planning board to the state and then be referred to the council and to us?
Yeah. So, you know, it would be kind of a memo format to the state. You know, there's a draft document you could, I could, I could send after this update. And, you know, it's not even a bylaw really. It's just saying, here's what Amherst is considering as standards and conditions, you know, do you think they're reasonable or unreasonable in terms of the regulations? And I, I don't know how much, you know, information they'll provide or if they'll have, you know, a reason why they may or may not agree with what we provide. And so, but some of it is just to get guidance, you know. I think there's still some interpretation to be had between the legislation and the rules and regulations. And so some of the standards and conditions that we have might fall under that, you know, is it, you know, it's probably, you know, some communities might think it's allowed and others might not, but I'm not sure how the state will view it.
Sorry. No, no, I'm sorry. That was a two fact. My, I just.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, you can go to Pat and come back to me. That's fine.
Okay, Pat. Okay, you got blocked twice now. I guess Nate, I wonder if you could clarify some of the areas that maybe the planning board or you as the planning, representing the planning department are concerned about or what you feel like you need guidance on. So we have a sense.
Sure. So, you know, in the rules and regulations, they say you really can't have occupancy restrictions. And then they define what's a prohibited regulation and what's an unreasonable regulation. And so, you know, the, the loss of an owner occupancy requirement. A few planning board members think that's, you know, an issue for Amherst. And so there's a student home definition that's being, being discussed that defines a student home. And then, you know, one of the, if it would apply to single family homes and duplexes and then the ADU, you know, that one of the units couldn't be a student home, the other one could. And, you know, staff's opinion is that, well, that's an occupancy or a use restriction that may not be reasonable. And there's a few criteria in the legislation. There's kind of three standards that have to be met to say it's reasonable or unreasonable. And, you know, yeah, some of the planning board members think they can argue that it is reasonable and others, you know, might say that it's unreasonable, that it's clearly, it's a use restriction. So that's one. You know, most zoning bylaws don't regulate single family homes in terms of parking or design guidelines. And so, you know, the, the regulations say you can't have any, you know, more restrictive, say, design guidelines than you do for single family homes, which is really nothing, except in a local historic district. And so, you know, one of the conditions we have, and we have it now, is something that like, you know, to the extent feasible, the architecture of the accessory dwelling unit is compatible with the primary dwelling or principal dwelling. And, you know, the state will probably could say that that's not reasonable because it's not objective or specific enough. And then what does that really mean? Like who, you know, what is compatible? You know, what, you know, there's, it's too subjective of a term. So it's those kinds of things, you know, even limiting parking. You know, we don't limit parking for for single family homes, but you know, the concern would be that you could put in, you know, seven parking spaces for an accessory dwelling unit. And for instance, I mean, it's, it's an exaggeration, but, you know, and so like, we do, it could be, we do have lock coverage and building coverage in our zoning. So we have dimensional standards that regulate some things, but doesn't clearly regulate, say, where parking could be located. So, you know, could you limit the number of parking spaces associated with an ADU? And then could you also have where they, you know, where they're located? We have one condition now that people like that the accessory dwelling unit should be behind or even with the front facade of the principal dwelling. So, you know, for instance, it couldn't, they ideally wouldn't be in the front yard, right? If there was room, you would, it would be to the next to or behind the house. And that's again, something that the regulations say is probably unreasonable, but, you know, it's something that members are discussing, like, you know, could we have some kind of standard about where they could be located? And, you know, it's qualified to the extent feasible, right? So if there's a property where it can't be to the side or behind, then it could go in the front. But if there's opportunities, then it could. And so is that really, you know, an unreasonable regulation with a qualification to the extent feasible? And it might be, well, who makes that decision, you know, that it's feasible or not feasible? And so it's, you know, those are the kinds of conditions that are, you know, in this document that may be questionable. And so to me, it's like the state really is telling people, just issue a building permit, right? Don't, don't set up permitting for it. Don't have a lot of hassle. And so, you know, we asked for a management plan to be submitted. We asked for it to be part of the rental registration. But we do for every, every rental property, right? And so to me, that's not unreasonable. We ask for any rental property to be subject to the rental property bylaw. So to me, I don't think that's unreasonable, but someone might.
Nate, thank you. Thank you for that detail.
I don't have, yeah, it's fine to keep our current bylaw on the books, you know, and then we have to have the protected use. But really, why would anybody, aside from that you get a extra hundred square feet, because you can go up to 1,000 with ours? I can't imagine why anybody would use the current bylaw and not the protected use. Right?
Well, yeah, I mean, what if someone, you know, they had the option though? So what if they would want to have one?
What would they get from that? I mean, you can build the 900, you just, it's by right. You, you don't have an occupancy limit, no parking requirement. I mean, yeah. So I can't imagine anybody choosing unless they really wanted that extra hundred square feet. But since there's no occupancy limit, if that is the case, you could have more people in 900 than 1,000.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a, it's a personal, you know, you know, decision, right? So you might want the extra hundred square feet, or you might say, well, I want my property to have some owner occupancy requirement in the future. And so I'll go through and have a permit on my property that limits that because that's, you know, how you want to have the extra unit. I, right, I mean.
If you're selling the property, it's probably, you'd rather have it, not have that anyway.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and, you know, some of it would be to allow the accessory dwelling units that have been permitted to have a permitting path. They don't become non-conforming, but it does allow more flexibility. And so we could, with our local bylaw, it'd say, we call it the local ADU. We could say it, it's now up to 1,200 square feet. We could change that as well to make it more of an incentive to do than the protected use ADU.
Oh, thank you for that. Okay.
Happy. Well, I certainly think it makes sense to go to the state so we don't draft something that they're going to turn down, you know, that, that makes sense to me. So it just on a, if I try to not pay attention to the labels of these and say, okay, there is currently a house on a property that could be converted to two units. And they want to build a second building on their property. And we call it an ADU and they want all of that to be rented. That would have to come for a rental permit, I think. Yes. You know, I mean, but just, you know, so I'm just thinking, so you, you could get three units on a property since two are usually fine. And I'm thinking of, you know, the zoning area where I live. Two is okay because our house at one point had a separate, they took a top floor and made an apartment out of it. So, so just how does the definition of the thing as opposed to just another building on the property? You know, how does ADU interact with what the prime, what the, the existing building has in it?
Yeah. So I think, you know, our, the current bylaw, you know, the assumption is that an accessory dwelling unit would be applied to a single family home or a two-family home. The way it's written now with the protected use ADU, it, it can be allowed on any property that allow, in a, in a district that allows a single family home that has a principal dwelling. So for instance, a property that has, you know, townhouses could have an ADU. An apartment building could have an ADU. So it's not, you know, it's not related to, it's not related at all to the use or what's happening in the other dwelling units on the property.
Now that answers my question. Yep. Thanks.
David.
There are a couple of questions for Nate. One, also, I want to be a little mindful of Nate's times since this hasn't been referred to CRC yet. I think, you know, a brief overview is great. I was curious, Nate, how, do you know roughly how many ADUs have been created under our, our current bylaw?
Yeah. So, I mean, you know.
Kind of a little pulse of them in 24.
Yeah. So, you know, Amherst allowed what we called supplemental dwellings. You know, like 20 years ago. So they were essentially accessory dwelling units. We call them supplemental dwellings, one and two. And before that, we allowed them as well. And then we actually changed the bylaw to call them accessory dwelling. So, you know, I think we, there's probably about with the accessory dwelling with a newer bylaw that's been in place for a number of years. I think there's probably almost two dozen that have been permitted. And then under the old system, there's probably another two dozen. So we probably have, you know, I'm pretty sure at least over 30 accessory dwelling units, you know, it, you know, kind of air quotes accessory dwelling units, right? So these smaller units associated with another principal dwelling. So we do have, you know, a fair number in town.
Yeah, good. And then I did, maybe Mandy was going to speak to this, but I, I did, I think it is important for us to just understand our process. Like how is, how is this going to come back through our process to the council and then be referred to CRC? So I'll leave it at that. Maybe Mandy's going to comment on it.
Yeah. I'll just say, you know, right now it's not a zoning amendment. It's really, say, a topic of discussion that planning board's been having. At first we were trying to kind of get ahead of, you know, knowing this new legislation was going to become effective in February. And so, you know, right now it's been, you know, at first I'd say we did have a draft bylaw, right? We were trying to develop some zoning. But I think the new approach right now is to run these standards and conditions by the state. And if, if we think that we get some guidance on that, then we would act, the planning board would then start to craft what would be, come a draft zoning amendment. I think, you know, it would be smart probably in March to come back to, you know, to you with, with, you know, with some language as well. So that, you know, the planning board and CRC are having some discussions about it before it becomes, you know, a quote official zoning amendment. And, you know, who could sponsor, you know, the planning board could sponsor it, the CRC could. I'm not sure, you know, where that, you know, how that will happen, but.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke.
Oh, yeah, I got a lot of questions, but um, I have concerns that it sounds like the planning board is not intending to revise the current ADU bylaw to conform with the state regulations. I think that opens us up to lawsuits, in particular, if the quote local bylaw, as you referred to it, includes as part of an ADU definition for the local bylaw. ADUs that would be defined and fit under the definition of protected use ADUs under state law. Because it seems clear to me that if an ADU meets the definition of protected use ADU under state law, under 900 square square feet of gross floor area or half, or not larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, that it's a protected use ADU, even if there's a local bylaw, that it has to follow the protected use ADU restrictions. So I'm concerned that it sounds like we are pursuing an avenue that would have an 800 square foot ADU not qualify as a protected use ADU, because I think that opens us up to lawsuits. So is the planning board intending to modify the definition for a local use ADU bylaw to meet essentially a definition of protected use that says ADUs that do not meet the definition of protected use ADUs? Because frankly, our 1,000 square foot ADU definition is not gross square footage, square footage. It's habitable space, which means it's actually smaller than the 1,000 foot. Well, it, it, it doesn't work. They, they're two different conversations. But I'm also concerned. So, so I want to know, has the state said that a local ADU bylaw can have more restrictions on ADUs that meet the protected use ADU definition as a parallel to a protected use ADU permitting structure? Because I don't think the state said that. And if they haven't said that you can do that, I worry about lawsuits. Secondly, I worry about all these restrictions that seem to be being talked about with protected use ADUs that sound on their face as violation of use and occupancy restrictions. The new definition of a use and occupancy restriction under the regulations says that limits the current or future use or occupancy of the protected use ADU based on characteristics of or relations between the occupants such as, but not limited to, income, age, familial relationship, enrollment in an educational institution, or that limits the number of occupants beyond what is required by applicable state code. So how, and then goes on and says prohibited regulation, a requirement that a protected use ADU be subject to a use and occupancy restriction. So I'm, I'm struggling here to see how the planning board believes that a student home definition restricting one of the aid, protected use ADUs or the principal dwelling unit to not be a student home meets this, these regulations when it seems clear that that would be a use and occupancy restriction based on enrollment in an educational institution. And it seems like some of the other things you were talking about, also, I'm not going to go through them all, would seem to right away just violate the state regulations that we must follow for protected use ADUs. So how is the town working with that? I, I, I guess I'm just at a loss to see why the town would propose something at the state level that in my mind, by just a clear reading of it, not even being an attorney, violates the regulations. And why we're trying to potentially keep a parallel track for ADUs that fit the definition of protected use ADU versus those that are outside of that definition.
Nate.
Yeah. So for the first one, the state says you, you know, back to the, our local bylaw, the state hasn't said you can't do it either. And so when we spoke with an attorney at KP Law, they actually said you could keep your local one as well, even if it is considered a protected use. So there could, so there could be parallel, you know, ADUs. I think that it is something that we're still looking into, but, you know, they haven't said you, you can't, right? So it's an option. You'd, you'd voluntarily go into the local ADU as opposed to the protected use ADU. And so that's something that, you know, we've been told that that could happen. In terms of the prohibited regulations, you know, although Mandy read a previous section in the rules and regs, and when you actually get down to the prohibited regulations, it says, you know, the statement, "A municipality shall not subject the use of land or structures on a lot for protected use ADU to any of the following: an owner occupancy requirement, minimum parking requirements, use and occupancy restrictions, unit caps and density, relationship to principal dwelling." But under use and occupancy restrictions, a requirement that a protected use ADU be subject to a use and occupancy restriction. So, you know, I'm not saying one way or other in terms of the student home, but you know, the, what members of, some members of the planning board have said, well, it doesn't have to be the protected use ADU. That's the student home. It's the other principal dwelling. And so, you know, whether it's the, you know, the other side of the coin or it's, you know, something. So, you know, they're reading it that, you know, you could have this kind of a student home definition because it's actually not subjecting the protected ADU, ADU to anything. It would be subjecting the other dwelling on the property or dwellings on the property to something. And so, you know, and I will say that the housing subcommittee met this weekend, that some of the members are willing to provide some justification to some of these. So they're the ones working on it. You know, some planning board members weren't all, weren't in agreement, Mandy, like you. And so they said, well, a majority were, and they said, okay, let's just keep it on for discussion and have the members who support it provide some justification and some reasons why. And like I said, it's still a discussion with the planning board.
Thank you. I've got a quick one, and that is, we have, we have occupancy limits right now in single family homes that are limiting us to, for unrelated adults. And we also have parking requirements for single family homes, meaning that, so we have to follow the, we have to follow the bylaw that says you can only park two cars, you know, in the front of the yard or between the street and the, the front of the building, that kind of thing. So having an occupancy cap of X number of unrelated, I would say at least we have that regulation that should apply evenly between, equally between our single family home requirements and our, and any ADU. That's just generally the kind of thing that I'm thinking about. We, we do have some limitations on our, on our housing today. And to expect that none of those would have to apply to a protected ADU doesn't make sense to me. So that would be something to look at. Mandy, one more question or so. We've kept Nate here longer than we expected. He's been on about 20, 25 minutes. So we are certainly welcome to write questions to him.
Yeah, I will say the occupancy, you know, you know, there's some staff that I think that for unrelated, well, you know, cannot be applied to protected use ADUs. As a protected use under, you know, MG, you know, it's a, it's now a protected use in the, in. As a protected use under, you know, MG, you know, it's a, it's now a protected use in the, in the state law and zoning. And so that occupancy restriction we have locally can't override that. So, you know, that's where the reasonable and unreasonable regulations come in. It applies to any protected use, right, like a religious institution or educational. And so we can't deny that. Say, for instance, it can go through site plan review, and we can provide conditions that are not unreasonable to something. So, you know, a group home that comes into town, we can't say no to that. That's a protected use, but we can put conditions on it in terms of, say, screening the parking or a number of parking spaces. But we can't really say no or have conditions that end up making it almost impossible to do. And so that's what the state regulations are with the ADUs, right? So that's the difference between, you know, being reasonable or unreasonable. I, you know, and I think some of these are questions that'll have to be answered. So one, you know, Mandy, you referenced gross floor area. And in our, in our bylaw, we say habitable space. The building code does not, it defines habitable space. So in the rules and regs, they reference building code, but then they say gross floor area. And gross floor area is, is kind of a meaningless term in terms of building code. And so, for instance, if you have a nine hundred square foot home with a nine hundred square foot basement, an unfinished basement is not part of habitable space or building code calculation for square foot, because it's unfinished. But a homeowner could say, well, look, I have eighteen hundred square feet between my basement and my, my first floor. I can put the nine hundred square foot ADU somewhere on my property. It could even take up my whole basement. And so now they have two units in what really is only a nine hundred square foot home, and they've exceeded half the floor area or what, you know, that, that provision. And so, you know, and, and I know some, I know on the listserv, and I know Rob's mentioned, building commissioners have been talking about this because there's just, you know, some interpretation how that gross floor area works with actual, how the building code works. And so, because in the rules and regs, they then mentioned basement crawl spaces and other things, which the building code doesn't recognize as part of calculating square feet. You know, storage areas don't calc, aren't calculated, say, like closets. So, you know, from a building code perspective, I say, I have, you know, nine hundred square feet of habitable space that doesn't include my unfinished basement, it doesn't include my porches or my outdoor space, it doesn't include storage areas or utility closets, or, you know, space below, you know, like six feet or five feet, you know, under eaves of buildings or roofs. And so really, a nine hundred square habitables, nine hundred square foot habitable space could be part of a fifteen hundred square foot home, right? That looks like a fifteen hundred square foot home. And so I think communities are going to be defining or interpreting that differently. And you might actually end up seeing, you know, it could be court cases, right? Massachusetts is set by case law and precedent that end up defining that better. Because, you know, some people might take a more conservative approach in how the gross floor area and nine hundred square feet is used, and others might take a more liberal approach, I don't, so.
Thank, thank you. Councilor Henneke, and then we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, so, um. Obviously, I'm not a big fan of keeping parallel tracks, because I think it's very confusing and potentially against the law. But if we do keep parallel tracks, how are we? If there's no bylaw for protected use ADU, which it sounds like at this point there might not be going forward or ever, how do we notify people that there is another option? Like, how, how will, will people know that there's a parallel option that is just the state law? Because it sounds like, frankly, the town or the planning board is trying to get around the state law that was enacted to build more ADUs up to nine hundred square feet with minimal restrictions. And that is very frustrating to me as someone who recognizes we absolutely need more housing and ADUs are a good way to do infill. It just sounds like that the planning board wants to find any way around having to comply with the state law in a way that quote complies with the state law on a technicality, but really doesn't do what the state law wants. So how are we actually, if people are looking to build an ADU, telling them if we're going to keep this parallel track, that there is, there is a state law that says you just get a building permit, that you don't have to go through processes, that you don't need an owner occupancy restriction, that you can rent them both out, and that is legal by law, how are we getting that word out? If we're not taking our non-compliant bylaw for ADUs up to nine hundred square feet off the books?
Yeah, I mean, that, so there's two. One, staff would tell people that, right, where, you know, and, and honestly, if someone went and applied, the building commissioner or building inspector would just, you know, if there was an application for a land use permit, say, someone's like, oh, I have to get a special permit for an ADU at some point, whether or not it was, say, planning staff, at some point, someone would just say, no, you don't need that. And secondly, I, we've already built out the building permit application in OpenGov that has these leading questions. And it's live already that someone can click through a series of questions to help determine what ADU there, you know, they would be applying for and how they calculate their gross floor area. So we've already tried to set that up to help guide an applicant. So, you know, if someone calls to me today and said, oh, I'm trying to build an ADU, I'd say, well, here's, here are your options. You have this new state legislation, we have an ADU on the books, and we'd walk them through the scenarios. And so the, I actually haven't tried the OpenGov application, but I know the building inspectors had set it up. And I think, you know, the idea is it would, you know, inform people, they, you know, like I said, a series of questions, and it informs them of how, what their options are and how they can apply and.
Good, so it leads them, it leads them to the answers. Last question, Jennifer.
It's not a question, but I thought, I guess I'm confused, that we were gonna have, like, you know, separate sections of the bylaw, one was going to be protected use ADU, and one was going to be our current bylaw, so that would actually would be written there, or have I been misunderstanding that?
No, no, you know, so that's one idea, right? So what the, what we could do and what the discussion is to have protected use ADU definition in the zoning bylaw, right? And then a second, another section in our Article Five for the protected use. You know, I know Rob Mora has said, as a protected use, the state definition and what we can regulate is already set in state law. And so, I mean, it's somewhat redundant to have it in zoning unless we have some other local standards and conditions. So, for instance, right now, if someone applied for an ADU, the, you know, the building commissioner and the town can only apply our local regulations that are consistent with the state law and rules and regulations. So there's maybe like, you know, a half dozen in our bylaw now that can be applied. So, you know, really, it is, it's just a building permit application. And then, you know, if you're a rental, you have to do the rental permit, you know, a management plan. And, you know, you know, we have something about like, you know, street numbers that are visible for the fire department and a few things. So really, that's all the things, you know, we went through it. There's like, I think, four to six conditions in our current bylaw that can be applied to protected use ADUs. The idea would be if we have this other section, and we think there are some other reasonable regulations that can be put in our bylaw, then they would be in addition to what's already there. You know, but I, like I said, I think the state really wants ADUs to be built. And to me, it seems, you know, we could allow more than one ADU on a property and have it be by site plan review or special permit, or we could, you know, make it really, you know, elaborate. And right now, the planning board said, let's just stick with a, a basic approach, allowing one ADU, you know. And maybe in the future, we'd want more ADUs on a property, but we haven't really thought about what that means in terms of permitting or what it would look like. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not, you know, I think we can operate the way it is now. It would be nice maybe to have the definition in our zoning bylaw, to kind of, to Mandy's point too. It's also, to me, it's just a point of reference that if someone is looking through our bylaw and they don't realize there's a state definition of an ADU, and they just see what we have in our bylaw, they might not know. And, you know, it's nice to have something there almost just, you know, just as a cue, right, for someone to say, oh, look, there's, there's these options. So whether or not we even put a definition in, because it's in state law, at the very least, we would change our bylaw somewhere in Article Five to say, you know, there's this protected use ADU based on state law, and here's the local ADU. And, and if nothing more, we do, still have to have some language like that in a few places, just to help people know that there's, you know, a local option and then this state option.
Thank you, thank you, Nate. So there still would be probably a process that goes to planning board, to CRC. Something gets referred, says this is the, this is the wording that we're looking at for section or for Article Five, whatever like that. Okay, we, we've taken up way more of your time than I thought we were going to. But it's, it's helping us sort of get a framework for when this comes back to us, and we understand more of what's applicable.
Sure.
Thank you, Nate, very much.
Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome to stick around, but I think you probably have better things to do. Take care.
Bye.
Appreciate it. Bye-bye. So let's move to the solar bylaw. Let's, let's move to solar bylaw. And where we left off last time is that we were going to take a look at Pat's suggestion for a hazmat section. And we were going to go back and just confirm that the red notes from the PR version were appropriate, and we, we adopt them or we delete them. And that will kind of clean up the text, so next time we don't have to have anything that says, you know, suggested ads in red. Mandy.
I thought we were gonna finish working our way through the standards and conditions section that we didn't make it all the way through. Submittal requirements, sorry, submittal requirements.
Submittal requirements, yeah. That's what I thought we were doing as well.
We, we're working through Chris's list with Chris.
Okay, okay, I, I was thinking we had, for some reason, I thought we had gone through that, and I got a little confused. Okay, then let's remind us where we left off. Chris is your hand up?
Chris. I think what we said was we would finish the submittal requirements, and then we would also talk about Pat's suggestion about hazardous materials. Because it wasn't posted in time for people to really look at it prior to the last meeting, but now they've had a chance to look at it. So that was my understanding of what we're doing. Okay.
I thought too.
Good, so Chris, if you could, if you could pop your, your voice, your audio up as high as you can, that would be very helpful.
I'm not sure how to do that. You can.
On my com, on my computer, it's the way up at the top, it's F7, which is the, the, the audio plus. It's like right up against the screen.
Is is that controlling my voice going out?
Yeah.
Well, I've hit F7 several times, and it, I don't know if it's doing anything. I can.
We'll just be very quiet and listen for you.
I could rejoin, you know, because I can't have my audio either. My, I mean, my video, my video isn't working, and I could actually go back out and rejoin the meeting, and maybe things would work. Would that be something I should do?
It doesn't seem to be a real issue. I would just need to know that you've, you need to just speak out, because I can't see a hand. Or maybe you, I don't know if you can raise your hand.
I can raise my hand, yeah.
Oh, okay, so we should be okay. Pat?
I'm just saying that what I did on my laptop, I'm not telling anybody, is I increased the volume. So Chris became louder to me, so I, you know, perhaps you could do that, Pam, if you're having trouble listening to, hearing.
Pat's correct. Whoa, yeah.
It makes a difference.
She became very loud. My fault. Okay, good. I'm happy.
Okay, so I think we had gotten as far as item twelve in, what is it? Seventeen point oh four was the submittal requirements. And I, and I'm not unfortunately competent to show my screen. And last time, Counselor Hanneke showed her screen. And I don't know if she's willing to do that this time, and then she also kept, kept track of what we said. So is Counselor Hanneke willing to do that again?
And she also put a big arrow, stopped here. That, 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 let's, let's get, let's just get back to where we stopped.
Perfect.
So we stopped right after twelve, right? We had some questions about training for emergency responders. It says plan for operation maintenance and annual training. And we were going to talk to Chris Baskin about that, but we haven't gotten around to doing that yet. And then, okay, next one is a utility connection plan. And I think we said we had already included that in number four and five, which have to do with the site plan, right?
Right, that's correct. We had included it with four and five.
Well, we didn't, we skipped over thirteen. Zoning district definition.
We included that in submittals as well.
That was included in submittals. I think that should actually be, we talked about this last time, that should actually be on the plan, because some, on the existing conditions plan, because sometimes a site is divided into multiple districts. And you want the surveyor to put that on the existing conditions plan rather than, there it is. So, okay, so we're good there.
So we're deleting number thirteen.
You can take that out of the site plan, yeah. Okay, now moving on to the utility connection plan and acknowledgement of application from electric utility. I think we have something about the utility connection plan in the site plan, which would be number two, right? Or is it just number four?
No, I think it's number four.
So here's, here's two.
Number two is the location of interconnections, including poles and wires. Number four and five have all of the detailed diagrams and tech, technical specs.
Number two doesn't have the interconnections, it has inverters, right?
No, the last one is interconnections.
Sorry, there it is, okay, good. So that's the things that are generally speaking off-site, right?
I think that's what you said last week.
Yes.
Yep.
So that means that fourteen is taken care of, right? I believe.
I think so.
So we can delete number fourteen.
The, the, one part of it, just, I'm just double checking, is the acknowledgement of the application from the electric utility that they know it's coming, is that, I'm just double checking, is that? I'm happy to put that up above, but I'm not sure that piece is there.
No, it's not, it's not there, and it would not be on a plan, it would be in the form of a document.
Okay.
Applicant would submit a document to the permit granting authority stating that they had been in touch with the electric utility, and they were in the process of getting approval, so that should still be there.
So, so just keep that piece of it.
I have a question about that. Is that something you do and contact the utility for well before you have a special permit in place? Like, is that, i- is it something you start that early?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and Mandy, in my trying to jump in before, I noticed that was also in the 2014 model draft that, that this, that the utility company was aware this was coming. You know, so it does seem to be a piece.
And acknowledgement of application from the electric utility, should we be more specific of what that application is? Is it an application for interconnection or?
That's what it is, an application for inter, interconnection. It's just to assure the permit granting authority that the person who is, or the entity that is proposing to put this installation on the ground has been in touch with the utility company, and the utility company is, is stating that this is a place where this can happen. If it's so far from a, a point of connection, it wouldn't make any sense for the applicant to go through the, the process, spending the money, doing the surveys and all of that, nor would it make sense for the permit granting authority to go through the process of reviewing the application, unless there was an assurance that the utility company said, yeah, this is a reasonable location for such an installation. So that's what that's about. Okay?
Thanks.
Okay. So number fifteen, well, off-site electrical system improvements. And I think that's important, because this involves, you know, lots of poles going down the street to connect this to whatever it's going to be connected to. So I think that's a reasonable thing to have there. Did we include that in four and five already?
So I guess one of my questions was, two, the site plans include a location of interconnection, including poles and wires. So I just assumed that's everything needed to interconnect. And isn't that the same as what you just said of additional poles for that, or is that different?
The site plan is usually things that are on the site that's controlled by the applicant. The site plan is usually things that are on the site that's controlled by the applicant. Um, I think that this number fifteen has to do with things that are off the site. It says identifying all offsite electrical system improvements. Um, necessary to the electrical grid to accommodate the power from the installation. So the utility company and the proponent or the applicate- applicant work together to figure out what's needed offsite in order to get this um power to where it's going.
So this is, this is almost a memo. I'm sorry, Pat, you had your hand up.
Yeah, basically, I feel like this should stay here. As it not be pushed into four and five. So I appreciate Chris's reasoning.
So we'll get rid of the little red.
Well, Mandy has her hand up.
Mandy, thank you.
I have a couple of questions with much of this language. Um, the I guess the list identifying all offsite electrical improvements makes sense if you know it at the time of application. But if all you've got is an acknowledgement of an application for interconnection, the applicant doesn't necessarily know what the grid system and the utility is going to do or need or apply for on the public way as to what system improvements they need. So I'm not sure that first half is even knowable by the applicant at the time of application. So question is, is it knowable by the applicant at the time of application? So they could actually do this. The second one is why does the planning board or the permit granting authority care who is paying for the improvements? So the second half of this first clause, identification of what entity is paying for improvements. Why does the permit granting authority care? Is that necessary in the submittal requirements to identify that? Um, and does it does that identification change anyway? What permit conversation is there? Why, why do they need that? And and all. Um, and identification of the parties responsible for the installation, inspection and maintenance of the generation tie line. Again, is that going to be known? And what, what is the permit granting authority going to do with that information?
Kathy, and then we'll, maybe Chris has her answer.
Well, no, I think, I think Chris could answer, but um if I flip this from trying to be protective of resources to trying to make sure the whole system works. One of the things that has held up some solar installations, Mandy, is a disagreement about who does what. So uh, that ever source says, that's not my problem, that's not your problem. So there's been a big investment and then nothing happens. So I don't know whether, Chris, this language is here to say, you know, if a big, big part of land is going to be taken for a large installation, you would like to know that um the connectedness has been agreed to by the utility. There's been, we were warned on the school, for example, that ever stores can take a couple of years to agree to connect us. Um, so that we should start working now on it. You know, and we're not a large scale solar piece because of grid capacity. So this might and I'm letting Chris answer. This might be there to protect that we're trying to facilitate this rather than um you know, uh, tie them up in red tape.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
I think it's uh, something similar to um, number fourteen above, which is assurance to the permit granting authority that there have been conversations between the applicant and the utility company to know what needs to be done in the future, whether it's all worked out in detail or not. Um, and I would say that all of these submittal requirements are things that can be um discussed during the application process. So, or during the review process. So if there is a particular item here that for whatever reason, the applicant feels like you know, we just haven't gotten there yet, or we can't get there because X, Y and Z. Then they would tell that to the permit granting authority and the permit granting authority would discuss that with them and see if they really uh, you know, are able to come up with that information or not. So it's, it, all of these things generally speaking are waivable. So, I mean, that might seem odd to you, but in the practicality of the matter, it is the case. I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but I think it's really just um, to make sure that the parties have spoken to one another and have a general sense of how this is all going to work.
I, I appreciate that. Um, it occurs to me that it's, it's not a bad thing to remind folks, like many other requirements, it's important to remind them of the things that they need to be looking for or have ready to be reviewed. Um, if I think of the state coming in and saying, you've got twelve minute, twelve months to review a permit. Um, you it, it's, it's not the town probably that's going to be holding things up in some cases. This would be fifteen, fourteen and fifteen would be situations where maybe the, the developer you know, gets into a little bit of a hiccup and then forces the, the remainder of the nine months left to fast forward every other aspect of the, of the permitting. Um, sorry, I saw uh, Counselor Haniki's hand up and I think I saw Pat's hand up.
So I just wanted to say that Mandy's hand was up, that's all.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, when I'm sharing, they got rid of the ability to raise your hand while sharing a screen.
Yeah, so move like this and I see.
Um. Okay, waivable sounds okay, but we've been told that other parts are not waivable unless it says waivable. And this up here says are required to comply with the submittal. In addition to the submittal requirements listed below, applicants are required to comply with the submittal requirement. That leaves no ability to waive anything and more importantly, you can't actually formally apply until all of these are met. So how do they get waived? Because you can't actually file the application until everything's been met, is my understanding. So where is the waiverability and how does that happen when in theory the town doesn't accept the application unless it's complete? And if it doesn't have these, it's not complete. So I, I guess I'm not quite getting that.
Chris.
A- as I said, that um, this isn't a completely rigid process. There's a lot of back and forth. Um, planning staff and the building commissioner meet with the applicant, the applicant's lawyer, the applicant's consultant and discuss all of these things ahead of time. And the applicant then has an opportunity to submit an application with a list of requested waivers. So they might, uh, that might be in the form of a letter from the attorney saying, we request a waiver from the specific requirements of, of item fifteen for their following reasons. And then the board would have the ability to um, grant the waiver or not grant the waiver. They could say, no, we're not going to issue this permit without having all this information. Or they could say, we understand why you're asking for a waiver. And in this particular case, we think that's reasonable. So there's there's back and forth in that regard. So it's really not um, you know, like a straitjacket that you're putting on. It's more like an uh, process that you're entering into and there's a lot of discussion about, about things along the way.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
I appreciate that, except when we were reviewing the U Drive bylaw, we were specifically told unless the bylaw says this provision may be waived, it is unwavable. And this section does not say this, these provisions can be waived by the permit granting authority. So I guess that's where part of my confusion is. Now I'm hearing, oh, you don't need to explicitly grant, explicitly say certain things can be waived for them to be waived. But we were just told in the U Drive hearings that you needed to specifically say they could, they could be waived for them to be waived versus variances which are different. And you're not talking about a variance here. You're talking about waiver of an actual bylaw.
Chris.
May I, um, so I think um, Counselor Haniki is referring to dimensional requirements and there are dimensional requirements that can be waived by a footnote A special permit and dimensional requirements that can be um well, that's really it. Dimensional requirements, but that can be waived by footnote A. So I think what we were talking about in the terms of the university drive overlay was that there were no dimensional requirements that could be waived by footnote A if they were rigidly there. Um, this is a different um, set of requirements rather than dimensional requirements like you know, front setback or height of building or, you know, lot coverage, things like that. These are requirements of things that you have to submit to the board in order to get your process started. So it's two different types of waivers. And in this case, the board generally speaking has the ability to waive some of the submittal requirements based on a request and reasonable um, reasons for asking for the, for the waiver. So I, I hope that that's a good explanation.
That makes sense when the submittal requirements are part of rules and regulations that the board has adopted, but these are part of a bylaw. Not rules and regulations. And so doesn't the bylaw have to give the ability to waive the bylaw? Because you'd be waiving the bylaw that the council adopts.
So I think that's a good point, that we could put another um, bullet or number at the very bottom that any of these submittal requirements can be waived or modified by the permit granting authority um, with a request from the applicant.
That's pretty broad. Not sure I would, I'm not sure I would want to state that so, so bluntly.
Well, it, it would require a, a decision, a vote of the board who was reviewing this. I think that's not atypical. But I take Mandy's um, comments seriously because this is a bylaw. And so we need to have some language in here about being able to waive some of these requirements.
But Okay, Jennifer.
I, I was just gonna echo what you said. I, I would be concerned about that broader statement. You know, then you know, anything, I mean, one doesn't know who's on the permit granting authority from in perpetuity. So I would be concerned about that broader statement.
Well, I this is not a purpose, uh, excuse me, perfect bulletproof process where everything works absolutely perfectly all the time. There's got to be some give and take. So we need to find some way of expressing the fact that some of these requirements can be waived or modified by the permit granting authority. Um, by a vote of, uh, you know, with a request and by a vote of the, of the board.
It's, so I'm going to use U Drive as an example. That was one of the first times that I've ever actually seen in writing in, within the bylaw that, that certain things couldn't be waived, could not be, could not be adjusted. Um, and typically there is some flexibility. It's a special permit. You ask, you give, you take. Um, it's, uh, nothing in a special permit is locked in. So to have to say that um um, doesn't seem necessary. Kathy.
Um, so we, we got stuck on this issue because of the specifics to specificity of number fifteen, which is what triggered it. If, if the wording, if fifteen and fourteen were somehow connected, acknowledge with the acknowledgement of application and the consideration of offsite improvements, da, 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 rather than a list specify. You know, that you've had, you've begun that discussion. So trying to reword it to, rather than you've come with a list of everyone, a consideration the beginning of a discussion, because I, I agree, I don't think they would have all this in hand on day one. But, but what it's saying is this is what you're going to need to operate this. So a consideration of uh, offsite improvements that will be necessary, including and then doing these. So rather than the list, Mandy, we, we soften the wording was one way of uh, them, they could, they could have a memo that they've had a discussion about these and details to follow. Um, you know, i- in, in their application. So I'm looking at a way of rewording it if it's in the bylaw that then it would also give guidance to the people who are, are overseeing the, the implementation of it. So these are the things we want to have been considered. So right now it says you need to have a list and identify, but a consideration of these. So it's a way of softening this wording to give the intent of what we want people to be thinking about. I'm not giving you specific enough wording, but I think that's conceptually what I'm looking for.
I see Mandy nodding her head.
I, I think that would be the solution here. I, I'm, I'm trying to think how that would be. I think you would combine fourteen and fifteen. You know, an acknowledgement of application for interconnection as well as acknowledgements of possi- I, I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how it would be rewarded because, you know, right here, it's identifying the improvements, identifying who's paying and identifying the part, parties responsible. So it's sort of like, I think what I gathered from Kathy, acknowledging that conversations regarding what offsite electrical improvements are necessary to accommodate the power. Um, yeah, something like that. I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah.
And, and you know, with identification of who will be paying for which improvement. So it's, it's that, that, that discussion has been uh, initiated.
That makes sense to me.
Good. Thank you, Kathy. That's a good resolution.
Okay, proof of liability insurance. Um, that's usually something that um is required, whether it would be required as part of the application or not. Um, it could be required as part of the building permit application rather than part of the um site plan review or special permit application. So if you wanted to delete that and just have it be um, it could be a condition. Um, or it could be something that the uh, building commissioner would require uh, as, as something that he wants to see as a result of, or as part of the building permit application.
Really? Chris, is what you just said is you potentially would move it to another section that they're going to have to have? They have to have it, but they don't necessarily have to have it on day one. Is that what you're saying?
They don't have to have it. Generally speaking, we don't make this requirement of other applicants for other types of projects. Um, this was something that was suggested by a different bylaw that we used to model for this one. Um, so what I'm saying is the building commissioner requires uh, proof of liability insurance from an applicant in order to grant a building permit. But normally we do not require, or the boards that I deal with do not require proof of liability insurance in order to get an application for a permit started. So this could be um something for the future for the building commissioner rather than um, something that we require as part of the application. So I think you could delete this.
Who's done for?
Move.
Yeah, I, I don't mind deleting it. I was just I didn't want to take up time. I was just curious, was gonna ask why what the reasoning was behind have the person who suggested having it here, but I'm fine deleting it. We don't have to.
Well, I'm not, I'm not as sure that I'm you know, these are you know, I'll give you a completely different example that um, not with this, but where there is a potential risk that the installation is going to affect the surrounding area, a house, a farm. So there was a suggestion on this for some farmland. Where if a building was put on the farmland that covered all the land, the water runoff to the farmland could destroy the crops. But one way of preventing it was enough liability insurance that they could make that farm whole. You know, so that if they thought it was a low risk, they can get the liability insurance. So I think it goes with big installations like this potentially have an impact, which is different than I build a house next to you. Um.
No, I, I understand that, but why, it sounds like what's different is requiring it at this point, not before the project starts.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. If it's not an application, does it, do you just rely on the building commissioner? Do you put it in a, um, before you get the permit, you have to, you know, if you're almost all the way through, y- you have to have this. Um, so, so thi- this to me feels different than our normal building permits.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Chris, and and we have not started, I don't think we've started a conditions list. We
I think we did have um, but I I just wanted to say that um every time the building commissioner grants a building permit, he requires that the um contractor submit a um proof that he has liability insurance. So that's kind of standard. So uh we we adopted this bylaw based on a number of other bylaws that we had reviewed, one of which was from Ware. But one of which was from Pine Valley Planning Commission, and we also looked at the Cape Cod Commission and a number of others. So this probably appeared in at least one or more of those, and that's why I put it in. But I I don't believe it's necessary as part of the application uh for a permit, but that's up to you to decide whether you think that is necessary or not.
Thank you. Uh, C- Council Henneke.
So I would delete this from here because frankly, they might not know who the operator is yet um versus the owner. And you might not be able to get liability insurance. But but the question that came up to me is and I would be fine more with standards and conditions, but Chris just talked about sort of contractor li- proof of liability insurance. So that's for the person building the item. It doesn't sound like we've ever required someone as part of a special permit or other PGA requirement to maintain liability insurance on the property after construction is complete. Me as a owner of a house, I'm not required by the town to maintain liability insurance. Now, if I want a mortgage, the mortgage company requires me to do it, protect their sort of investment. But but is this seeking proof that after construction is finished, there is liability insurance on the property? Or was the intention, given what Chris just said, that only during construction? Those are two, to me, completely different things that need to be cleared up and couldn't, can you even as a town require a private owner to keep liability insurance just to own property?
Well, and Mandy, I would ask that because if it was a large factory next to homeowners, I think maybe yes. You know, we're talking about something that's quite different than building a house. So the liability insurance I was thinking isn't just during construction phase, but during the operation phase that you're carrying it. So yes, I agree with you. I mean, there's something different about this. It's the equivalent of a a large.
It's industrial. It's industrial.
It's industrial.
Pat and then Chris.
Well, basically, I I wanted to ask Chris, because this says has sufficient liability coverage pursuant to industry standards. So it seems to me that there are standards that this property, this operator, this owner has to meet. Can you clarify that for me?
Um, I I can't really share much clarification about that, but I would say a couple of things. Banks and anybody who's gonna lend um the applicant alone to um build this thing is going to want liability insurance, right? So I think it would be taken care of in that way. Um, the other thing is that there are going to be um state regulations with regard to erosion and sedimentation and things like that. If if the uh, if the erosion and sedimentation controls don't work and some property adjacent to it is damaged, um, that's going to be uh taken care of. And um, so I think that, you know, the conditions of the permit, the zoning board of appeals puts pretty strict conditions on its permits and requirements of the state are going to um control of impacts to adjacent properties as a result of um, something not going going properly here. So I think.
Chris, if we, excuse me, if we said proof of liability insurance prior to start of construction.
Yes, I think that would be fine.
But then it's not a submittal requirement.
No, that's right.
Um, does, yeah, so so Chris, Chris, you mentioned, um, yeah, the the erosion control uh meas- measures fail and we get a Williamsburg where it gets, you know, we, we there's untold damage from from sedimentation and and erosion. Um, is that covered by liability?
Uh, it it, I don't know. I imagine it is, but um the granting authority and the conservation commission are gonna put conditions on the project to try to prevent things like that from happening. And so then the owner would want to have liability insurance if such things happen, to be able to help him to pay for whatever damage occurs. But that um I think is more connected to the building process and what the building commissioner grants permission for than it is as part of this application process.
Dave has. Yeah, I see that, Dave.
Sure, I was gonna suggest maybe, these are all good questions and and I and I think, you know, I've been listening carefully just in in terms of our coverage during construction, but then what about after it's all constructed and it's producing energy? What if something happens then? But I might suggest that Chris, if you all are okay, that Chris seek more information from Rob on this. And also Erin Jock and bring that back to you, or she could email you. And and then we could kind of, you know, tighten up this section. Cause I I do think there are a number of questions about kind of during construction, but also everything goes well during construction, this thing is operating like it should, but then something happens. Is there, is there a bond? Is there, you know, what what is there to protect the town as well as a butters, you know, for the next twenty years as this thing operates?
Yeah, thank you. That's great. Kathy.
So wh- while I was listening, I Googled and found a paper called Property and Casualty Insurance for Large-Scale Photo uh Solar Systems. So I will just send that to everyone we get off that, because it's addressing just that, Dave. You know, on a, it's a paper talking about what might you wanna think, and it's got the word casualty, so it's liability and casualty on a once it's operating, once it's operating, and it's talking about different types of coverage expenses. So it's it's a thought piece rather than a do the following. But it's that bigger piece, that this is an industrial thing, as and it notes, these are relatively new. So we're having the insurance industry and liability and casualty industry is is figuring out how to price it. Um, so I'll just share it to everyone.
Great, thank you. And that's a good suggestion that we come back to these. We just, let's not delete right now.
I'd appreciate it if you took the lines out of it, because it doesn't sound like we're ready to delete specifically.
Yep.
Minor, but thank you. Thanks.
So moving down to number seventeen, I think I I had made the recommendation that um the public outreach plan be kept. Um, and that would be an uh effort to um notify and inform a butters and the town in general. Um, and it's kind of like prior to the public hearing process. And um this um condi- or that this requirement suggests uh including a project development timeline. So that seems reasonable, but the second part of it, where we talk about publishing legal notice in the um paper and um notifying a butters within three hundred feet, that's a legal requirement that we do, that we have to do. Um, the minute we get an application for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, we always do that. It's sort of state law. And so there's nothing, no way we can get out of it. But having um the applicant make an effort to reach out to the public and to reach out to a butters ahead of time, just to say here's what we're doing. Do you have any comments and concerns? And of course, people would have comments and concerns, but um it seems like a good uh first effort and a good faith effort on the part of the applicant to inform the public. So I think this should be kept, but just the first half of it and not the second half.
Thank you. Kathy.
No, I don't have it. Sorry, my hand just.
Okay, okay. At one time, we had talked about the word um notification instead of outreach. Um, was that, Chris, are you, are you suggesting that we, that we actually have outreach instead of notification?
I think outreach is good, because the notification, the formal notification, happens from the town.
Okay.
And uh, yeah, if there was an outreach plan, there's possibility that the developer and a butters and stuff might actually collaborate together and come to some solutions before um the the uh development actually begins, the project. Always hope.
Yep, good.
Okay, number eighteen.
Oh, I had a question about this one.
Oh, sorry. Yep, go ahead.
Um, is there a similar requirement in the submittal requirements of forty B projects or other, any other part of our zoning bylaw to submit to the PGA an outreach plan and project development timelines um in any other, for any other project in town or for forty B projects, which I know are included in my first half?
N- n- no, there's no such requirement. The only requirement is for marijuana installations that um that you have an outreach plan to the public, but there's no requirement for another type of project. So perhaps it's reasonable not to require that.
So that would be my question. Why, why this one and not other? Like, what what makes this one different than, say, a forty B? Or the same as a marijuana, I guess, like if we do it for marijuana?
Well, this is usually a very large installation. It's not um, it's not like building, you know, six townhouses or even building a an apartment building. It's gonna take up a lot of acreage and it will have, you know, an effect on um a large area of land in town. So letting people know about it, I think, is a reasonable thing. But you may find that it's not um, not necessary. It it sort of prevents people from being surprised by things, which I think is good. But again, we don't require that of anything other than the marijuana installations.
This is, this is presumably a lot more impactful than a marijuana outlet.
Do you wanna come back to that later or?
No, I'm okay for now.
Okay, um, description of financial surety to complete the project and to decommission the project at the end of its operation. I think I had said that this item can be deleted, because the requirement is already covered by section seventeen point sixteen of the draft solar bylaw. Um, so I think that we could um delete this here.
Yes, it is at the, it is at the end. It's a requirement.
Number nineteen, preconstruction photos from the right of way. Um, that is something that we have required in the past for other large installations such as um wireless telecommunications towers um where we require, you know, preconstruction photos and then we require a photo or a photo montage or a visualization of what the thing is gonna look like in the future. So this is really related to what what is it gonna look like? And, you know, some people say that's not something that you should think about or or talk about, but others think that it's important. So um, this is kind of like the existing conditions, uh nineteen, what does it look like now? And then number twenty is what's it gonna look like in the future? So you can discuss whether you think this is important and whether or not you wanna keep these two um two items here. And with the second one, I think we said visualization rendering or photo of existing conditions, preconstruction and post-construction solar development, including perspectives from the right of way nearest abutting properties or residential structures if access is permitted by abutting property owners, because it's not clear that access would be permitted um by abutting property owners. So do you wanna have a discussion about those two items?
Yeah, yes, Kathy.
I see Mandy's hand is up too, and I think hers went up before I clicked.
Okay, Council Henneke.
So looking at your memo, Chris, you actually recommended nineteen be deleted. Um, and then you just read the new addition of words to twenty, and it sounds like that addition, at least it looks to me that the addition of your recommended words in twenty is so that nineteen can be deleted, because otherwise they would be the same thing in two different numbers. Um, is that an accurate sort of?
That was exactly my comment. That's accurate, yes. Yeah, that was my, people have to look at Chris's wording, but her suggested wording takes care of both. It makes it simpler and it's a before and after set of photos in her memo.
Yep.
Is that something you wanna keep?
Yeah, but with your wording, you know, so getting.
Nineteen, we delete nineteen.
Mm-hmm, okay. Number twenty-one, glare analysis.
It's like, are we, let's let Mandy get caught up. I think in number twenty, we have to do the access.
So I I have more questions with number twenty then, um, as I read the whole thing. Um tree coverage? So existing tree coverage, does that mean the photos have to be taken at a certain time of year?
I think you can see trees, whether they have leaves on them or not.
So rendering or photo simulation means they could just simulate that coverage. But is um, is tree coverage even necessary here? Existing conditions, preconstruction and post-construction solar development and perspectives? Do you even need the words and tree coverage?
Well, in one of the other, one of the follow-ons, uh, there's a discussion about retaining existing trees within the the buffer area. And then it says, but you could cut them if you, you know, if they're gonna shade your your array, you can cut those. And so I think having visuals and we and we've seen some pretty decent aerial photos of parcels that show that we've asked for vegetation coverage, so you can see what's meadow, what's shrubby, what's trees, that kind of thing. So this is, this is just, it's actually, it's actually, in a way, it's a little similar to that requirement at, for the beginning. In in a way, it's part of, it's part of section, uh, item one under submittal requirements. Topography, um.
What's? Can I just ask, if we're taking photos before and there are trees, won't we see the trees in the photo?
Yes.
So then we don't need the words. In other words, if if there's a forward after, we don't need those words, if that's what you're asking about, Randy.
Basically, like, it isn't existing conditions covering that. So that's why I was trying to figure out what what's that adding? Is it a specific, a specific thing?
And then, and then if that and tree coverage isn't there, then the planning board can ask for more. If they, if, you know, we sent you some photos and we're, we're not seeing it very well. I'm just saying, I don't know what else is gonna be on the land, but trees, houses, uh, the photos will show you what's there.
We have, we have item uh under um number one, it's uh sec- it's item D, characteristics of an extent of land cover type. And I would assume that that would show, again, the types of ver- variation of vegetation. Uh, if that's sufficient, we could hold it at that and not have to repeat it here. But if we're, if we're talking about visualizations, they wanna, they wanna be able to show, they should be able to show the existing conditions, and maybe it's similar material.
So in the um, what you just referred to, number was it number two or number one, those two have to do with plan view. And this has to do with um three D view or phot- photography view. Um.
Got it.
It's two different things.
Got it.
So I have another question.
Oh.
The nearest abutting properties or residential structures. Are they meant to refer to, in some sense, the same? Are they meant to refer to in some sense the same thing? Or is it meant to say? If, and what is nearest to budding properties mean, right? Um, like, like adjacent properties or with all the three hundred feet ones? Um, but also is it meant to be that if it's, if there's an abutting property that has a residential structure on it? That it should be from the residential structure? Or is it from the property line and the residential structure? I'm I'm not sure that that phrase is clear enough and and of what exactly it's seeking?
Yes.
So I think this is an effort to um, take into consideration. Um, you know, what somebody would see from their property. Whether they have a home on it or whether they're doing something else, farming, or it's a park or whatever it is. And what they would see um, of the solar installation. And so it's a, it's a kind of a protection for nearest abutting properties, in my opinion, would be um, properties that are like right adjacent, although this doesn't say that. I agree with that.
Could we say adjacent properties in any residential structures thereon?
Yes. Did you put that in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions about this? Number twenty?
Um, just when we change all the P, all the these to PGA? Do we need to keep this town staff determined too? Or can I just? Like?
You could put the PGA because town staff makes recommendations to the boards. And so our thoughts are incorporated in what the board asks for, because usually the boards will take our recommendations.
And then significant areas or roadways, what does that mean? Because we already have right of way and adjacent properties.
So you could probably take that out. Or take or put in a reference to what is a fore, a foreset or aforementioned or something like that.
If you put a period about after PGA.
Mm hmm.
It's clear that they could ask for more.
Right, that's right.
So just shorten it. So the period goes after P B P P G A. It, I keep thinking it's the Professional Golfing Association, but but.
Wrong, wrong committee, wrong committee.
All right, I gotta plug my thing in. Give me a second. So, but may determine additional submit for for review. I think it would just be there. May determine additional submitted.
Yeah, that's where I was, you know, the PGA may determine is needed. Exactly. That's what I was trying to do. There were a lot of PGAs in that sentence. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so it ends after the word review, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you do a quick? Uh t- t- temporarily accept that whole thing so I can read the paragraph?
Thank you.
Yes, you don't need to clean up the rest. We're just trying to do number twenty.
No, I think that now reads clearly.
Yep.
Thanks, thank you.
Great. Yeah, it's amazing. We have, you know, a quarter of the words. We're finally finished.
So are we ready to move on?
Yep.
All right, um, number twenty-one has to do with a glare analysis and proposed mitigation, if any. This, I know we've had discussions about this in the past, whether glare is an issue, whether glare can be measured, whether glare should even be considered, but it is included in many of the solar bylaws and the model solar bylaws. It's also mentioned, I think I sent you links to articles, perhaps down below um, in a different part of this bylaw to documents that are online, having to do with um, glare from solar installations. So it is a topic of concern for people. Especially people who live near them or drive by them or whatever. So um, it is typical to ask for glare analysis and if there is going to be a problem with glare for a plan for mitigation to minimize impact. Um, and that's why this is here. Diagram to illustrate any glare created by angles of the sun reflecting off solar panels and inform screening need and placement. So I think that's a reasonable thing to keep in, but there may be people who um, would argue against that.
Mandy has a hand up. Thank you, Mandy. I can't even see Mandy on my.
Sorry, um.
My bar right now.
Yeah, I, a couple of questions. Um. So I'm the one that said it's, it's more of a reflective analysis or something, but I'll, I'll skip the wording issue for now. Um. I guess proposed mitigation, if any, to minimize the impact. Is some of that more? Um, not some, I mean, a mitigation plan is a submittal requirement, but minimize impact on affected properties and roads is not really a submittal plan. A submittal requirement, that's more of a standards and condition part. And how do you measure minimizing impact? Um. When, you know, like? I guess, how is that decided and ruled upon during the application and hearing stage? If there are impacts, uh, there's solar panels, right? Um, and then my other question is diagram to illustrate any glare created by angles reflecting off. Well, there's glare, I, I guess. I don't quite totally get what that looks like and what it what it looks like on the paper and how it helps. Like, is that? It, is the diagram meant to have these angles with arrows pointing towards various other properties or roads? Um, at what time of day? I guess I'm, I'm struggling with what would this actually look like and how would you satisfy it? Is it at all times of day? Help me understand how someone could diagram glare for fifteen hours a day.
So, so I, I add.
Right, um.
Let me answer. So, so this is if, if I added it. Or that was the discussion, right? So um, the angles of the sun can be marked and they are, they can be diagrammed so that you understand at times of day when the sun is shining and reflecting on the panels, you, you know exactly where those rays are bouncing. If there are, if there are areas that uh, in their analysis would be directed toward elements that you want some protection for, like the neighbors, um, you would, you would look to it use that to inform where to place your screening, your screening vegetation. So it, it, we probably don't have to have the words a diagram to illustrate. Um, if we just simply say do the glare analysis and propose mitigation uh, where it appears that it will be um, impactful on on abutting properties. I mean, you could, you could have, you could, you could actually have more impact on, you know, somebody with a house up on the, on the Pelham Hills. Uh, because you would, you would not be able to screen that, obviously. So um, that's, that was the intent of this, just. Can we hear from Chris now?
Well, it's just, yeah, glare analysis should be presented and then the board, the PGA can decide what to do with it and have a discussion with the applicant about. Okay, you've said glare would affect these locations. Is there anything that can be done to mitigate that glare? And it could be potentially changing the angle of the panels so that they don't point directly at whatever the places is going to be impacted. It could be that, you know, these panels sometimes um, they don't rotate. I forget what they call it, but they move during the day and it could be um, moving those panels during the day so that uh, they don't impact whatever is, you know, potentially going to be uh, impacted. So um, it's, it's really a discussion, but in order to start the discussion, you have to have some information. And that's why the glare analysis is important. You could say proposed mitigation could be um, developed during the conversation with the PGA. And so really what you need as part of the submittal is a glare analysis. And you probably don't need proposed mitigation to be submitted because that's going to be part of the conversation later on.
So you don't, you don't want to require the glare, the the proposed, I mean, because they could say it's going to glare at this time and da, 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 so we're going to plant sixty-foot poplars because they're going to be fast growing and they're going to screen what what we think would be detrimental. So we don't want them to come in with that information?
Well, I think that they could either come in with it if they see there's a problem, or they could wait for the PGA to bring up the issue and then have a discussion about, okay, what are you going to do about this? You've said it's going to be a problem in this instance. Can you give us some suggestions about what to do to make it to minimize that?
Kathy and then Pat.
Um, I'm looking at the notes you wrote to us on this, Chris, so I'm if we said a glare analysis period and took out all the thing and then added the word is um depending on the analysis, the PGA can require a proposed mitigation plan.
Yes.
That'd be great.
So do you do the analysis? I mean, if it's in the middle of nowhere and no one can see it. Then you say it's, there's a big installation up by me and it took away trees, but no one can see it. It's not, the glare is, so it's a glare analysis. The PGA may require mitigation. Depending on the results, you know, or as part of the permitting process.
And the PGA would determine whether the mitigation is onerous or not. The PGA would say, well, you know, in order to really mitigate this problem, you're going to have to spend a million dollars on twenty-foot tall whatevers. And we don't think that's reasonable. So um, it's, like I said before, it's a discussion that the applicant has with the board about what is reasonable. So I think that um that Kathy's wording is good. Depending on the analysis, the PGA may require mitigation.
Pat, you had your, you had your hand up. It's okay, I can go with Kathy's language. Thank you, Kathy. Okay.
Number twenty-two. Documentation by an acoustical engineer.
Can I interrupt?
Oh, sorry, Pat.
I, I'm sorry, and I just want to say that I have, because I have people coming over at six, I have a hard stop. And I'm trying, and so we should figure out what's happening between now and six. Okay, let's, I'll do a little rundown. There are no meeting minutes. Um. The next agenda preview is solar bylaw. We don't need to do an ADU update next time, so we can scratch that off. So right now we have solar bylaw and we would, I will.
It also says planning board and CBA.
Yeah, exactly. So I think, I think uh, I may want to take the time and get some feedback. Uh, we may want to look at interview questions and just have them done and ready, but it's not critical. It's just, you know, we've got a couple of months before that's required.
I would. Are we, how much time, I'm, I'm not looking at a clock. How much time do we have left?
We have, we have, we have fifteen minutes max.
I.
Well, you guys can stay longer. I just want to explain.
My strong preference would be to see how far we could get along this list.
I agree.
Anyway, so you're not going to miss much, Pat. Okay, let's keep going.
So number twenty-two is documentation by an acoustical engineer of noise levels projected to be generated by the operation of the facilities. We've decided to eliminate construction and decommissioning. Um, because it's reasonable to assume that there will be noise during those times, but the operation of these things can be noisy. Um, and it apparently has to do with inverters. And some installations can be very bothersome to neighboring properties. I understand there was a property up in our project in Conway that really had that problem. I don't know what they did to ameliorate it, but in any event um, having an acoustical engineer analyze what is being proposed um, makes sense and present that information to the PGA and then they can discuss what potentially could be done to mitigate if there's a problem.
Thank you. That's, to me, that's that's probably one of the the bigger impacts. Um, so again, placement of this, of something like this is, is key because it could be quite a distance from neighbors. That would be preferable.
Yep. Any questions? No. Okay, here's one that um, we had discussion about last time. Or we talked about this topic last time. Location and approximate height and percent tree cover on the site at the time of the application filing. Um, trees with the diameter, diameter of breast height at eighteen inches for evergreens and twelve inches for deciduous or greater. Um, is this reasonable? In my opinion, I think what we should require is that the applicant outline on the site plan where the area of clearing is and where the area of um, re- retention of trees is. And usually they do that by a kind of a cloud-like um, line on the plan. And I don't think we should require um, them to be specific about the location and size of particular trees, particularly because these projects are huge. And if you require um, such detail about what is there and what's going to be cut, I think it's going to be really expensive and unreasonable. So.
Kathy.
And I thought last time that we had deleted this, but maybe it was repeated twice because we have, Mandy just showed us including trees is up about, you know, what you're going to be clearing. Um, instead of the counting of trees. I think we had another one, but I agree that this you know, we, we had the clearing of property, so.
So this can be deleted, number twenty-three.
Yes, we have an in-conditions plan that requires land cover types, and then we have a site plan that requires showing vegetation clearing, including trees.
Mm hmm, yep.
So I'm, I'm going to raise one thing that that we had a long time ago, talked about the word mitigation. And we haven't really even delved into that. Um, I'm not sure that we are or are not going to talk about mitigation of, of anything. It's a, it's a project. We don't we don't mitigate for subdivisions, that kind of thing. Um, if, if we were going to ask for mitigation measures beyond just screening with, you know, evergreen material to protect neighbors, um. We might want, in fact, to understand better the, the areas that were going to be cleared, but we've, we've already asked for that. So I think I'm, I think I'm okay. I had the word mitigation written into my um copy here.
May I say something?
Yep.
So I think that we talk about screening later on in this document as a whole. So
Yep.
That should cover things about buffer zones and what you can see from the road and all of that. So I don't think we need to have. That should cover things about buffer zones and what you can see from the road and all of that. So I don't think we need to have hmm, a discussion of mitigation with regard to number twenty-three.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Number twenty-four is a map and description of all soil types as found on the USDA um, website. And we're saying we can delete that item because we've already talked about.
We've already have it, right?
On the existing conditions, right?
Exactly, yep.
Number twenty-five. Requirements regarding soils management and conservation on farmland. So this is where um, a solar installation would be placed on farmland. And the thought here was that, well, after the um installation has run its course after twenty or thirty years or whatever, um, it may be possible to remove the solar panels because somehow they've discovered a way of you know, shrinking the size of panels and have, doing it in a much more consolidated manner. And you don't need all that farmland anymore to um, to, you know, take it up with solar panels. So we want to make sure that the farmland is preserved so that it can be used for um, to farm in the future. So I think that's what twenty-five is all about. And there was in version eight, um, an amendment, which I don't have in front of me that may delete, may have deleted these things shown in pink. I'm not sure. So maybe uh, Councillor Hanke has an idea of how that turned out.
So I don't know whether that's a version eight or not. Um. A draft I'm working off of that has various changes from me, which is a version seven. Um. Greatly changes this, and I don't know whether I moved some of it. In reading some of this, um. It it changes it to a soil plan that includes the following. Um, so so it references this soil plan because all of this is like submit a soil plan, right? And so then, um. But some of this, I think why it had so many changes, and I can put up what what's in here, um. Whatever my changes are. Some of this is no concrete or asphalt should be used. A lot of this is um actual like conditions requirements, not part of a sub- submittal requirement, right? Um. You know, this demonstrate that the project meets or will meet requirements by submitting a soil plan. And then it's these requirements, right? But the requirements are not a submittal requirement. The requirements are sort of a permit requirement of standards and conditions requirement. So I I think we're conflating things in this number between what's required and what should be on a soil plan. So I can put up what this redraft I have looks like. Um. Which I think.
Just, I'm going to interrupt just for a second, Pat. I think we're probably not going to get to your um hazardous materials today.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, but I am, I want to have Mandy keep going because I don't know whether I'm not following or agreeing with her.
Yeah, I.
So I want to hear more.
Yeah, what I think is, what, right, here's the web soils map. That one's already been included somewhere, right? A soil, because because we included that in the existing conditions, right? Um, but I think the rest of this was what does a soil plan include? And then I'm guessing, but I'd have to go to the rest of my thing, that the the some of these that are more prohibitions were moved to later in the bylaw. Right? Because if you read this one, no asphalt or concrete shall be used under solar arrays except blah, blah, blah. That's actually more of a bylaw requirement, not a submittal requirement.
That's right. It's later on. I've looked it up. I don't remember what.
Yeah, I agree with that and we did move it.
So I think we moved a lot of these. I'm not sure where. But um. I'm just going to highlight them for now.
Mandy, you're, and you're saying you're keeping a plan for minimizing soils that the, what's in yellow? What's that? I'm.
It's at the bottom of her screen is what Pat said.
I'll page up.
Item B, item B.
This, this is what my draft at some point had is as number twenty-five. A soil plan that includes the following. I just deleted one that's already in the existing conditions plan, the soil types, but um a plan for minimizing soil disturbance. The square footage and land cover type of each area that would be disturbed, information about proposed topsoil or other soil removal. A calculation of earthwork operations, listing all of that, and if material is to be imported. Uh, the this part is actually more of a s- a standard and condition, right? Um. And then something about avoids the use of chemical stabilizers, um. Some of these are more standards and conditions, but it was what does the soil plan need to include? And then move any of the sort of prohibitions or requirements into the correct section later in the bylaw. Which would probably be some of this.
Hmm.
That might be this one.
And 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 avoiding the use of chemical stabilizers.
Yeah, although the exported soil is a proposed disposal site to identify, that would not be.
Then we're talking about moving these to a place later in the bylaw?
Yeah, the high, the the now commented ones.
Hmm, okay.
So on on item B, on item B. I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't need to talk.
Uh, Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, uh, my request, I like that idea. My request for next time, Mandy, is if you excerpt this into its own page and say a soil plan, whatever, and show what we're moving somewhere else, it's so that we don't lose the um pieces that we're saying is part of the construction. You know, just having these need to be moved and then wherever I just, um, so we can delete, then we can go ahead and delete ballast foundation, whatever we don't want, but because we know we're moving it somewhere. So doing what you're doing now is fine. And I just, uh, soil, soil management plan. Um, when I read this, I had no, it didn't, it looked like it went beyond soil management. So I like the change. This is soil management shall include the one you just showed us. But I need to see it in kind of a clean version.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
Is this a good place to stop?
These are just all duplicates now. We have them, but we moved them.
Yeah, I think twenty-six is completely duplicated.
Okay.
Yep.
It is, yeah.
Yep, we've, we've incorporated elsewhere.
The stormwater also got moved.
It's it's too.
Yeah, ma- moved to submittal requirements, didn't it?
Yeah.
Or for, um.
Yeah, it's right there. It's it's right there, stormwater management.
No, that's the infrastructure. That's not the plan.
Not the plan. Okay.
But they always include a plan. It's.
Well, it should be listed, though. That we want it.
And it's usually not on on a map. It's usually a bulky document that talks about how are you going to control stormwater? So.
Yeah, I think we need to keep the management plan because the infrastructure is just what are you building?
Okay, so it's not, it hasn't been moved. That was my question.
Yeah, I don't think it's been moved.
It's, it's six P M.
Yeah, I'm heading out and I apologize. I won't, I can stay longer usually. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Pat.
Bye.
And I need to go soon, too.
Yep, yep, we need to, we need to close right now. So let's make a note. Where did we stop? We stopped with, what number the heck is this?
Well, it's, it's uh, number twenty-eight. It's the day, it's the chemicals. And so when Mandy comes back with this soil management plan, it had chemicals in it. And I just want to know does chemicals come in twice? Um, earthwork operations. So it's, look, I'm just looking for how to make this as streamlined as possible. So maybe a couple of these things are going to be incorporated under this, the the soil management, including.
Will the chemicals have to do with operations during construction?
Okay, that's different, right? Thank you.
Operating and then later on during decommissioning. So they come in at all different times. Um, so asking for a list of chemicals that are going to be used is reasonable.
We're, that's part of Pat's addition. I'm right.
That had that.
I'm sorry, I, there's only, uh, Mandy, what's your question?
We're discussing twenty-eight next time, not tonight, right?
Correct, twenty.
So all I said is we stopped there and I'm going to need to see this whole thing to see make sure it's worded differently than the soil management plan has chemicals, because I don't disagree with you, Chris. So I just think we're stopping.
Okay, Kathy, and also look at what um, Pat was suggesting.
Right, right.
Let me just say that the soil management plan is particularly useful for farmland, but it doesn't talk about other instances in the forest or, you know, any other type of land. It only talks about farmland, so.
Um, is that, is that an issue and should we be thinking about it?
Maybe. But that's a reason to retain number twenty-eight, even though some of these things are mentioned in management of farmland.
Yep. Okay, folks.
Okay, and thirty-two.
Mandy, thank you for scribing for us again. Really, really helpful. Um. We talked about next agenda preview, no minutes, no announcements. Um. So is there anything outstanding that that we, that, Chris, you need from us or you, or we need from you?
I have a list of things that I was supposed to do from the last time, and I have a few things to do from this time. So I will do those things. And the next meeting is March thirteenth, is that correct?
March thirteen, right.
Okay, all right.
And that's when we'll go over the bulletin board notice? Notices? For ZBA and planning.
We're, we're not going to have time to do that.
I know, so we'll do it that meeting.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, and I didn't do any public comment on this particular topic. Um, which I probably should do. Let's just see if there's, if there's anyone. Uh, is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this before we close up? On specifically on the solar bylaw? I see no hands, so we will not do that. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Second.
Uh, let's go around. Kathy.
Yes.
Pam is a yes. Jennifer.
Yes.
Councillor Hanke.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. It is six oh three and who gets to stop the recording? Maybe I do.